Welcome to Finance and Personnel. Can we start off the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, I want to say, stand up for my, just, uh, just a quick note. Deborah Crone been reporting in Oswego County for many years. More than ten. She is retiring, and this will be her last committee meeting ever. So, I just wanted to give her a little praise, maybe a little applause for what she's done for.
When you get this straight, you're not gonna come and hang out with us, or?
I'm really bored.
Run it for legislator now, I guess she says.
Okay, taking everybody's chance to go over the minutes. First by, you have something?
No, I was gonna second it.
Okay, first by legislator, to a second by legislator Lockwood. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much. Onto, uh, resolutions. So, do you see one? Resolution authorizing accepting order. Standing up the committee voting grant. First by legislator, follow second by legislator Wilbur. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much. D.C. two, resolution authorizing execution of delivered deeds for property sold by the Oswego County Legislature, titles to which are required by tax proclou- pro closures for tax years 2019 and prior. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. P.S. one, resolution accepting New York State stop DWI grant and authorizing budget modification for this attorney's office to stop DWI. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. P.S. two, resolution authorizing budget modification emergency management office, emergency services homeland, security grant. Move it. 2019, first by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Holt. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. P.S. three, resolution authorizing budgetary modification E911, overtime payments. Move it. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. P.S. four, inner packets, it's listed one way, it was amended in committee. As to.
It was amended in committee because it didn't have to have the CICAA co-op bargaining unit in the classification, so that was taken out.
Okay, very good. And I'll move it. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Okay.
Yes, question?
P.S. five. This was not in the packet.
Correct.
And it went through and was approved through jurisdictional.
That's right.
Okay. Resolution authorizing budget modification sheriffs department uniforms and ballistic vests. I'll move it. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood.
I had to find, tell everybody, this is just moving money from the sheriff's budget to purchase these ballistic vests. It takes a while, but you want to get these ordered, that's why they're trying to last a dollar. And that's why I had to, Kerry didn't have committed because I dropped the ball, it was on my hands. You could've just said, move the money, you know, all right? Yeah.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. I.T. I.T. one, resolution authorizing budget, budgetary modification Department of Solid Waste, additional hours. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Wilbur. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. I.T. two, resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Solid Waste, gasoline and oil. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. I.T. three, resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Solid Waste, overtime payments. Move it. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. I.T. four, resolution authorizing budgetary modification, budget modification facilities and technology department repairs, buildings and properties. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Resolution authorizing budget modification facilities, technologies, New York State homeland and emergency services grant. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Wilbur. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. I.T. nine, resolution authorizing purchase of additional equipment highway department. First by legislator Twist. Second by legislator Holt. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. E.P. one, resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Community Development Tourism and Planning accept dispersed transit. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Resolution authorizing budgetary modification health department, H.G. one, sorry, there was only one on three. Resolution authorizing budgetary modification health department, additional hours and overtime budget adjustments for 2019. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. H.G. two, resolution authorizing budget modification increased early intervention program services cost. Cut. Cost. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Carries, thank you. Resolution authorizing budgetary modification health department preventative biological expenses. Right, biological expenses, okay. First by legislator Holt, and second by legislator Wilbur. Any discussion? All favor? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
He's not the right kind of me asking that question.
I know. I.T. four, resolution accepting overdose added to action grant from New York State Department of Health Research, Inc. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. H.G. six, resolution authorizing budget modification for the purchase of additional x-ray fluorescent paint analyzer.
Moving for the question.
First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood.
Are we gonna need more of these, or what's?
Yes.
This is part of the wet paint.
It's, it's, it's part of the state's new law, reduce child, uh, leaded, blooded level down from fifteen to five, and we need more, uh, device to test these.
Do we have one of these devices yet now?
It's, it's older one, yes.
We have an older one?
Older one, and this older one, because our case volume will increase ten times. And the current one, and if we increase ten times, and we have, at least need two people in the field, so we need two.
We're probably not gonna have to have any future purchases now, I think, legislator. This will be the only one machine I'll need.
I cannot promise to say in the future, because we're trying to get a state fund, because this is state unfunded mandatory. Okay.
You just had to make us mad.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Any other questions? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. H.S. one, human services, resolution authorizing budget modification Department of Social Service Employment and Training to accept Federal Trade Act funding. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. H.S. two, resolution authorizing budget modification Department of Social Service to transfer funds to additional hours, admin division and ministry division. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Wilbur. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you. H.S. three, resolution authorizing budget modification Department of Social Service, now hygiene division, transfer funds for a one-time contractual increase. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Discussion? Where's, where's, what, what is this? Since you're here, what is the, is it?
This is, um.
A contract we can know about, and what is it for?
Nicole is right here, if you would.
Oh, okay.
This Oswego Hospital contract.
This is the, the forty-five thousand dollars.
That's the budget mod that would support the additional one-time funding to Oswego Hospital to, it's for their clinic services, both their adult and child clinic. It's, um, prior year funding that was being reallocated to support the deficit that they submitted in their consolidated fiscal report.
Thank you, hundred percent OMA funding, so.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. H.S. four, resolution approve, approving parks recreation fee schedule. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Holt. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. H.S. five, resolution authorizing budget modification Department of Parks and Recreation Camp House improvements. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Resolution authorizing, H.S. six, resolution authorizing budget modification Department of Parks and Recreation Camp Zerbi improvements. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Lockwood. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much. F.P. one. Resolution establishing date for re-levy of 2018, 2019 unpaid school taxes. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. F.P. two, resolution establishing date for re-levy of 2018 unpaid village taxes. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Holt.
Should this be 2019 or 2018?
2018.
Well, it says twenty, motion to amend to.
Motion to move twenty, to change 2018 to 2019. That's right.
All favor, all the change?
Aye.
Okay. As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Mr. Chairman. Previous resolution, F.P. one, also title was eighteen nineteen, and the result was nineteen twenty. So, uh, I think, way to do it is a motion to reconsider F.P. one, and then amend it, and then readact it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to reconsider.
First by legislator Twist, and second by legislator Wilbur. Okay, so. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
Now that it's here, I'll make a motion to amend, uh, say, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And second by legislator Twist. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Okay. Resolution F.P. one, as amended. Right? Is it good we voted on the change? Now, we gotta vote on the change, vote on the change. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're all in favor, we voted six times.
We're already done with two, okay. It has to be three. Resolution awarding professional services can transfer human resources department, self-insured pharmacy benefit administrator, administration. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. F.P. four, resolution fixing time and place for budget hearing on tentative currently budget for the year 2020. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood.
We need a motion, we need to amend this resolution as well, because it says twenty nineteen in the heading.
No, it doesn't.
Says twenty twenty.
Just twenty twenty. The one that was put forward.
Well, well, that's right, it was twenty nineteen. It's twenty twenty, and. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Says twenty nineteen, you can all look at it.
Here's the twenty nineteen, all in favor?
Paper. So, yeah, vacancy review.
Do you want a bundle?
Yeah. What do we have?
Uh, the health department has a typist backfill for an internal promotion.
Okay. First by legislator Twist. Second by legislator Holt. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, okay. Two highway, in a block, please.
Crew leader for retirement, heavy equipment operator, do a backfill for promotion purposes, medium equipment operator for backfill promotional purposes, and a medium equipment operator for retirement.
Move it. First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Holt. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
And the sheriff's department, that's his correction officer, need a retirement.
First by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator Lockwood. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Okay. Yes, please.
Support examiner, do a resignation, senior typist for resignation, typist part-time for resignation, account clerk, do the resignation, account clerk part-time, backfill promotional purposes, account clerk full-time for backfill promotional purposes, and then we have four community service workers backfill for promotional purposes.
Okay. First by legislator Twist. Second by legislator Holt.
Do we have, do we have lists for all these positions, are there active lists?
Yeah.
For all in the higher up room, because I see we're waiving the thirty days on these, I don't want to be waving thirty days.
It's to start the process, because that is lengthy for them to get from the interview, but they are on promotional work.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Really good.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
No, 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 no.
I'll go first. Um, basically, well, in our packet, we have, um, the twelve part-time vacant positions, and then currently, there are thirty-eight vacant positions with a year-to-date savings of one million eight hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and some change. Um, also is our listing of exams that we have on our website, and the results that we're waiting to receive back from state local service. Uh, we're really excited that once the new webpage launches, we are going to be able to accept online applications through our portal, that is linked through our human resources, um, program that we have, so it's super exciting. We're able to take, uh, credit card payment, so, the all-new get stuck for eight hours and minutes to five, hopefully increase our candidate numbers.
When, do we know when?
Next Wednesday.
Thank you.
There you go, that's what I defer to. Yeah.
Okay, treasure.
Thank you, Chairman. So, the sales tax difference.
I'd like to, before you start taking notes, do we have a nice big TV and another one over inside over here?
They're growing.
They're growing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is current to last year. And we're looking at about thirty-six million right now, so we're above, above last year, but remember, aid payments are coming out next month, which, try to maybe take that surplus. And that's just the breakdown of the amounts. Um, capital reserves, eight point six, still pretty stable from last month. OTAS, about a hundred twenty-nine thousand, appreciate Steve, and, uh, and rather than working on this, making sure that, uh, the numbers are close, it's about, it's a moving target all the time, and, you know, we're, we're within fifteen thousand of that right now. So, appreciate all the effort on that. And that's just the breakdown for when you do it on your computer. I want to tell you about the auction update real quick, a hundred fourteen properties sold for one point four million. And I included a sheet that shows all past years, so you can see where the other years fell in line. And it's very nice to see that there are no exemptions, uh, legislative exemptions, what a headache, and whether headache is gone. And then just an update for the foreclosure notices. Um, there are one thousand seventy-six domingua notice, uh, foreclosure properties. Of that, we sent out seventy-five hundred mailings, so, um, the office has been extremely busy trying to answer phones and help people about their situation. They need to pay by January thirty-first, twenty twenty, or we take it. There is no, um, really no grace period after that, and then comparative to last year, we're almost double. And I just want to say, express pay filings surpassed a billion dollars, but, it's like a progressive on a slot machine, because of the domingua notices, people, over the weekend, um, we amounted to about almost forty thousand, just in two days of pay, not mine. And that's the staffing request, and I'll go over with my budget, if you prefer, Mr. Chairman. And I can go back, and, um, that's just the breakdown. I just want to say, uh, this is the people that are handling your two hundred million dollars, and several hundred in the yellow accounts. So, uh, they appreciate, again, they appreciate your support, and there's a couple other departments that have challenged to do something for Halloween next year.
Sure.
So.
What's in the yellow cup? I don't know that shirt.
Uh, yeah, no, we don't know that. I'll leave that up there for a while there. Never seen smiles like that in the front of this office in years, I'll tell you, and they're real smiles, uh, they're working hard, so, still. Maybe there's some yellow cup.
Wonderful. Mr. Church.
Thank you. Uh, well, as you can imagine, my court is budget, uh, had time to do for the last month or so, so, we'll get to that a little bit later. Uh, just, uh, of note, a couple of other things that occurred this month. I did travel to Buffalo recently to give a presentation to congressional staffers on the Wayne Sanctuary project that went very well. Some of the staffers from representing Congress in other areas of the state came up to me afterward. She was saying, and we're wondering why their areas hadn't come to that, so, uh, we're looking pretty good for them right now. Uh, also, something else that's been in the works for a while, but I got formal notification. Uh, I've been appointed to the National Association of Counties Energy Committee, uh, to advise Washington and environment energy, and, uh, yeah, environment and energy matters. So, that's gonna require a trip to Washington next year at some point. But, we're one of only two counties in New York State that have representation on that, so, the street and the power plant, so I think that's gonna be good for us.
Very good. Wonderful. Okay, um. Yeah. Let's get it on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to bring forward the, uh, budget, and move the changes that have been passed along by, uh, the juror-station committees.
Okay. So, those passed along?
Yeah.
First by legislator, or, uh, first by legislator Wilbur, second by legislator, yes? All favor?
Well, we need, hold on.
No, no, thank you. Hold on, hold on. We're bringing it forward.
They just said a little bit, I think, yeah. Quick procedure would be a motion, unbudget itself, seconded, and then discussion, you would make a motion to amend for the committees.
Uh, it's two separate. Yes. So. We have, we have. Rest in a second. Bring it forward. Right. Okay. Discussion, yeah, something, um, correct. And then the discussion, you make a motion, and the committee, okay?
Motion, correct.
Okay. So, with these committees, committees have done. Any discussion on the budget? Correct.
Right, somebody can make a motion, and we do a key one, split motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the changes in the committees.
Up a bigger, it's, it's incredible.
Have a motion? By legislator Holt?
Second.
And a second by legislator Twist. On that motion. All favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay. Discussion? Any opposed? Very good?
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion on the budget?
I'd like to oppose some changes.
Okay. Yeah. Get your. You're.
I'm trying to change this in budget. Please don't approve before I ask one question. Come on.
We're talking about that, eh? Legislator twist.
Okay. So I'd like to start with page thirteen, line one-one-six-five-zero-one-three-zero-eight. Page thirteen, line one-one-six-five-two-four-seven-zero-four. Page thirteen, line three-three-one-five-zero-five-two-zero-one. In this, on this motion, I would like to cut that. And page thirty, line one-four-one-one-one-eight-six-zero-one. I'd like to cut that line as well. Page forty-nine, line.
Forget the last one.
The last one was page thirty, line one-four-one-one-one-eight-six-zero-one. Next is page forty-nine.
Could you slow down, Steve's got to make the rapid because he's the one who.
He's got to move fast.
So first part of the result, three ADA's?
Correct. Well, no. It was line one-one-six-five-zero-one-three-zero-eight. Line one-one-six-five-two-four-seven-zero-four. Line three-three-one-five-zero-five-two-zero-one.
So say ADA, quote, type, different papers?
Correct. Page thirty, line one-four-one-one-one-eight-six-zero-one.
Just kind of quit whatever.
Right. Page forty-nine, line three-zero-two-zero-nine-eight-three-zero-one. We're going to decrease that line to eighty-seven-three-eight-seven. Page ninety-nine, line six-zero-one-zero-zero-five-eight-zero-three. We're going to remove that line. Page one-oh-six.
Hold on.
Which one is it?
Page ninety-nine, line six-zero-one-zero-zero-five-eight-zero-three.
Is it zero-zero-five-three, forgive me, though?
Zero-five-eight-zero.
DSS attorney is.
DSS attorney.
On page ninety-nine?
Correct.
The new one. Yeah.
Potato three.
The sixth one down. Eight-oh-three, five-eight-oh-three, yeah.
Oh, the new one.
Yeah.
And so, is it just getting the new one?
That would be my request to the finance.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right, moving on, page one-oh-six. Line six-zero-seven-zero-two-zero-six-two-two. And then the line right below it, six-zero-seven-zero-two-zero-six-two-three. I would also like to, a motion to remove those two lines as well.
They're not in, they're already out.
They're already out. They're already out, perfect. Less work for Phil. Okay, moving on. All these are going to be page one-oh-eight, line, starting with line six-zero-seven-zero-zero-four-four-eight-three. And then six-zero-seven-zero-zero-four-four-eight-four. And then continue on to eight-nine, nine-zero. And then also six-zero-seven-zero-zero-four-seven-zero-three. Motion to remove those as well. And then page one-oh-nine, also to remove six-zero-seven-zero-two-one-nine-zero-two. One-oh-nine was?
Okay, so I have a first by legislator twist on this. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second from legislator Holtz. Discussion on proposed changes. Some legislator twist.
Can we do it in one place or should we go down?
It's a single motion. A single, a single motion.
Yeah, but there's a, there's different, every, all different departments.
Just emphasize what department you're talking about when, when you go to your discussion, that's all. Is there discussion on proposed changes? Yes, sir.
I'd like to object to all of the proposed changes to the DSS budget. And they put in all of these positions. The staff is overwhelmed right now, along with the legal department. We got a good presentation from them yesterday about how they keep having a hard time keeping up with the demands of the, the caseloads. So I do not think that all these new positions in DSS are unreasonable. They should stay in as is, as they are doing the best they can to fulfill the, the issue.
Okay.
Legislator, turn on.
As I'm, I'm just kind of curious to talk about page ninety-nine. You know, the additional on DSS attorney, we've got others for DSS, since we discussed that length and jurisdictional play. I'm just curious on the basis of, how, what's that, what's the basis?
I, I can, man, so me personally, these positions, I understand that we need more people in this department. I'm not going to say we don't. However, we can't hold people in the current position if we have. So adding more positions somewhere where you already can't people, can't keep people in the current ones doesn't make financial sense. So that's why I made.
So if it doesn't make financial sense, there's no movement of the money. It would allow us to bring people in, get them trained, because the training piece which was discussed at the jurisdictional committee is extensive and is detrimental to not being able to fill those. So, because what happens is when you hire a person, they come in and they're unable to perform the work for extended period of time. Perhaps it's been six months or so until they, uh, get trained up. So it's not, in, in this budget, it's not taking money away from anything. It's not adding extra burden. It's given us a cushion for being able to hire people. They get them trained because we understand that they're going to continue to be attrition rate. That it's not going to be a final, there's not going to be a final stop on any of the attrition. But what it does is gives us that cushion, so we're going to do a bow wave of people leaving. And then services not being taken care of. But it allows us to get people trained upfront, it allows us to, to stop moving the money all around and so on. And get the people that we need in there. If we could fill the, if we could fill the positions and have them filled for a twenty-five or thirty years career, we wouldn't be asking for this.
We, we do have our CPS manager here, Sir Finley. I think what's important for legislators to understand about these asks. You know, first of all, I did a lot of quick thought for this. This was not an easy decision to ask for eleven of the positions. And I understand that that's a really heavy lift for us. I only did it because kids are unsafe in our community right now with the present staff. And our caseloads are absolutely out of control. Sarah, I don't know if you want to talk at all to what our workers are experiencing right now. Now, this is really a child protective investigation, so these are, are really our most vulnerable, maybeest children in our community, so.
Yeah, at this point, we have about fifty-three percent of our case workers are receiving reports through what we call our regular rotation. So because we have pretty much half staff that are able to go out and respond to reports, we are over what the state says we should have for the number of investigations per investigator. So the state recommends fifteen, says we should have no more than fifteen. Seventy-five percent of our case workers, actually may even be a little bit higher than that, have more than fifteen. And that is, those are cases that are not overdue. So those are new cases coming in. The, it's a tremendous amount of work that has to be done. Everybody has to be interviewed within a certain period of time. We are not making our required contacts because we don't have the people, we don't have the time, we just don't have the capacity. Plus with the, the drug epidemic we have, you know, case workers are spending a lot of time having to remove kids. And removing kids, you know, on drug cases or, or just in general, is tremendously time-consuming because it's not just the work that they have to do for a regular report. It also includes all the court work, the foster care, CACs, you know, finding foster homes. It's a tremendous amount of upfront time. And so when they have these investigations with removals, which there's a lot of them, they continue to arrive, those other investigations are still coming in. So what we talked about yesterday, I already explained, was that we have had turnover and our turnover continues. However, it's better in the sense that with our training program, the people who have come in and have been here for a while now are actually staying. So we're seeing that that is working. And the reason why we continue to have turnover is because we have to have people who can adequately perform this job. And it's not for everybody, it's a very difficult job. So some of the people we bring in that are new, we have to, to weed out. So, and that will continue to happen as we bring people in. But for, for our purposes, it's, it's so imperative that we have people who are trained, who can do this work, can manage their workloads. And without it, we're not able to meet our, our state mandates.
I, I'm really begging for you to give a second thought to this because, again, this is not something that I did quickly. We have really worked hard for three years to try and kind of turn the corner here. And we have, we shaved ten points off of our turnover rate. So we're at about twenty-seven percent turnover. But, you know, as, as Sarah said, we're retaining our more experienced staff, goes over here, goes less than a year when they're coming in. We have a tighter training program, so we're able to help people understand what the job is quicker and help them to either self-select out or to leave the role if they're not able to handle those responsibilities.
To, to read, yeah, to support what Stacey's saying, I mean, what she's, what she and her staff has been doing over the past several years is really making some remarkable changes over at DSS. It's an uphill battle, we feel like, every, every good few steps we're taking forward, we end up having to take a couple back. I don't know when we're going to hit the, the hump of the, of the opioid crisis and it's, and, and the problems that that is, is leaving with us. It's, you know, becoming rewards for so many children. That's why the foster pair rates are double or triple what they were two years ago. And, you know, as with the, the, it's a caseload issue for the caseworkers as well as the, the, the training issue. I mean, we know that there's going to be vacancies. And, and that, and that has that payback at the end of the year that was just recorded on what we have. But we do have to keep a constant flow of getting these people in. As far as the attorneys go, the attorney staff has been part of the remarkable change over there. It saved us a ton of, it saved us over a hundred thousand dollars last year from what we would have done. It's not going to save us as much now if we add an additional attorney, but it's going to make them more efficient. And it's, it's still going to save us money from, if we were to, to, to job that out to private attorneys. And what we're going to find is we're going to end up doing the same thing, I believe, because of the efficacy of that, of that group of people and the increase in morale over there. We're going to end up doing the same thing, bringing on attorneys for the defense, what do they, what do they, they call it? The.
Assigned counsel.
Assigned counsel situation. So, I mean, I think it's, we, we had both, two of our three new staff attorneys in yesterday at, at our meeting. They're doing a super job. Talking to Tom Vettidetto yesterday about his encounters with these folks, they're doing an incredible job. It's increasing morale over there, it's helping us to retain people. We are mandated to, by the state, to have, to have a Department of Social Services and they reimburse us from sixty-six to seventy-five percent on all of these positions. The attorney, I believe, is seventy-five percent reimbursement. It's a bargain. We can't, there's a, some situations where when we drop out attorneys, which is what we're going to have to do if we don't hire this attorney, we're getting seventy-five percent of our salary. If we have to job some of this stuff out, we don't get that reimbursement on a lot of that.
Is there, is there a cap on that?
No.
There is no cap?
No, not to get the attorneys. There's three attorneys. There's sudden court wins that we have to cover. There's fair hearings back at Mexico we have to cover. The, the scope of work just seems to continue as legislative rehab said, you know, we have.
Where's the scope of work coming from? Who's, is this the state that's making your scope of work larger?
No, it's the caseload, it's the cases.
Okay, legislator one more.
Yeah, so I, I have a question, you have a, and this might be more for Julie, I don't know. You have a, a case worker's list right now? Where, where do we stand on, is it a fresh list or is it been out for years?
Well, we're getting, I think, we're doing, I think, better recruiting. The new website is going to be awesome, I think we'll get more people signing up for civil service tests.
We're giving it like three times a year now.
Yeah, they, they have more on to.
So we have nine vacancies right now for full-time caseworkers and we have three part-time vacancies. And then you're, you're asking for eight additional caseworkers, so we'll have a total of seventeen vacancies.
Well, we're bringing seven onboard, or we brought seven onboard Monday, was it? No.
Because this was as of the eighteen.
Early December. Early December, so we've got them hired and.
So seven out of the nine will go active early December after they're training?
Well, no, that's when they start.
That's when they start, okay.
They have three out of, three out of eight that have made it through the last round of training that will be wrapping up their training this month and be able to be out in about, in November.
Okay, now with that, I just have a, their, their reimbursement rate is low. You were Irish.
Sixty-two percent.
Sixty-two percent, any cap on that?
Yep.
And there's no need for reimbursement if, if they're not filled. I never finished before. If I could, if I could finish?
Yeah.
I, I, I did interrupt it up. But to finish it off here, the attorney, if we bring the attorney on and she needs a support staff to be able to do what she needs to do. It's still, and again, it's still saving us money from if we were to job this out. And so in here is also a paralegal and a typist, I believe, correct? So two person, two other people coming on with the, the new attorney. Thank you.
I just have a question on the paralegal. We have a DA's office that has a number of attorneys and they're only going to have one paralegal in there for all the attorneys that they have there. I don't even know, Rich has a paralegal in his office. Do we need that many paralegals for social services or can we get by with a few typists at a lower rate than a paralegal?
Ah, boy, I wish one of the attorneys was here right now.
Can I, can I? Terry, paralegals can be able to do certain types of work that a typist isn't because they're trained in that area and the preparation of certain documents that have to be formed, that have to be filed with the court. And again, there's research that has to go into it and there's certain criteria that have to be met. Where a paralegal, either DA's office or DSS, is going to have that knowledge to be able to do that, whereas a typist isn't going to.
So the paralegals and DSS direct all of the stipulations. They, you know, after there's a court and there's a back and forth between all the different attorneys including all the attorneys for their children, the modifications are made, that's with the paralegal. I mean, if the paralegal wasn't doing that, our attorneys would need to do it. And our attorneys really need to be in court because our court activity, I did put in the budget. There was a slide in the PowerPoint that showed what our, our court appearances were. And of course, those are just petitions we file. Court appearances, you can have between four and eight appearances with one petition at a time.
We have nine lawyers in DA's office with, with no paralegals right now. Going to have hopefully one.
Correct.
And I don't have enough people, Terry. I mean, I want to be honest to that. I mean, the paralegal's going to have certain information and discretion in drafting documents. With that legal knowledge, if you start putting a typist doing it, frankly, they're going to be working on a classification. And they don't have the skill set to do it. And I I would like to be able to address my budget parts, but honestly, to speak on behalf of Stacy. We have been starting to implement the new bail. For those of you who aren't familiar, come January first, there's going to be a drastic change.
All right, hold on, hold on, Greg. Hold on.
Can I just make a motion real quick? Can I just make a motion that we do this department by department? Because we're jumping all over the desk.
Exactly.
So let's just actually make a motion that we.
You want to, you want to re, you want to re, you want to amend your original motion, what you're looking to do?
Yes.
Okay, to do it by department.
Yes.
I've got a second, but.
So we could be here till nine o'clock at night if we continue circling, so.
Okay.
Do it department by department.
Okay.
So we'll continue with with my changes, yes.
With your change, okay. Legislative twist.
I'll try and summarize as succinctly as possible here because I know they said we could be here nine if we needed to be, that would be appropriate. We're doing the best thing for the county for our constituents as possible. So I'll I'll try and be, I'll summarize this. The request in particular that we made for DSS, particularly the attorneys, the additionals, the paralegal. It's not speculative anticipation. Do we think this is going to happen or that's going to happen? It's based on genuine empirical data. It's based on the track record. It's based on the history of what we've seen for turnovers, et cetera. And you've heard me in other meetings and and conversations where I've used the term runtime. You know, when we when we look at making big changes, we need runtime, see is it going to work? In fact, we can't guess about things. But in the case of the attorneys in particular, we're very happy to have them on board. We were forward-looking. It felt, let's bring on attorneys, our own in-house attorneys rather than farming that out. It worked out great, but the runtime that we needed was to see how would they handle the workload, what would be the impact, et cetera. During this last year that we've had them, that runtime determined that we could use more. So that's where we've asked for the one more attorney in particular for DSS. And again, it's based on empirical data. How much time do they spend in court? How much time do they spend with these cases? The caseworkers are generally overloaded. That's not a soft issue. It's genuine hours. You look at how many they're working, how many kids they're handling, et cetera. We looked at the charts and the data. I said I'd summarize, so I will. So that summary is, again, this is not some speculative anticipation. It's based on the empirical data. It's strategic moves that we're making. By strategic, I mean taking a look at the long term. Not some tactical, short-term, you know, the usual opioid nature or whatever. We've looked at this genuinely and strategically for the county and for the safety of our children. And for the benefit, as you said, the benefit for the, maybe it is for the benefit of our workers to keep them healthy as well, like we said. And I actually, I'll stop there. We've already heard how many, you know, CPS workers, we've done about fifty percent there, how many are actually out on the job, et cetera. So again, it's a strategic move, not tactical. It's not just speculative. It's not guessing based on empirical data. I'll end it there.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's go completely. There was a caseworker who lived in Bolton and I didn't realize until a couple days ago, he now works in Alanaugat County. He would much rather drive longer and just to avoid the stress that he had endured working. And I don't. And so we need to slow down the turnover rate in order to have more success accommodating the needs of the families here. So again, you know, for those of us who were there for the presentations yesterday. It was quite long, but it was extensive and everything presented was reasonable and logical. So to keep to keep the turnover rate down would be to add all these positions and be able to serve our families.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. And the point I was going to make before was regarding Stacy's request for the positions about the bail reform. We have been implementing the new bail reform. It's going to take place in January since Labor Day. Unfortunately, people who would have been arrested before and gone before a judge. We could have got an order protection being given appearance tickets. Because of the changes in discovery, because we're going to have to wait for reports to come back. We've had to delay in making arrests. Two Fridays ago, we were sitting with CPS caseworkers in our office trying to strategize. And a guy who would allegedly sexually abuse kids. What, how we're going to proceed in a way, because we couldn't quite file charges because we're going to have to wait for reports. And Stacy's CPS workers were there trying to figure out how do we keep the kids at home safe? Because we can't do everything we need to do. Because if we try to do it now, the case is going to get dismissed in January. Just a couple nights, well, a few nights ago, we're sitting down in the sheriff's office at ten o'clock at night trying to figure out how we keep five kids at home safe. Because we're not going to be able to take the guy and get him arraigned tonight, get bail set and get an order of protection. So CPS is trying to come up with an emergency plan. So as much as the discovery and the bail law impact sheriff's office, my office. The unintended consequence is putting more work on DSS. And they're going to have to scramble to keep these kids safe. And there's going to be more petitions being filed for emergency removals, protectives. Where they're going to need that, or else we're going to have kids being placed at homes with people who are violent, people who are committing sex offenses. And people are, quite frankly, should not be around children.
Thank you. Can I wrap up? I spent hours and hours on this budget with Stacy and her staff. Like again, with our meeting yesterday, we spent just about an hour and a half on this budget alone. We went through every section of the budget. We would not have brought it forward if we didn't think it was all warranted. Having been thinking it would be the best use of the portion of the county dollars that are not reimbursed.
And again, this is sixty, sixty-two? Where should go? Sixty-two percent?
On caseworkers, seventy-five percent on attorneys. And the paralegals.
So just to ask the clerk to make sure we're all on the same page here. Did you break down the page number when you were writing down these?
I've got a majority of it, which I'll be checking against our records.
So.
If we could break by department.
What I understand from Legislative Twist was that page ninety-nine, there was one line for social service. These are all social service ones. I think I would discuss that. Page ninety-nine, there was one position ending in five eight zero three. Page one oh six. Oh, no, those are already on, sorry. Page one oh eight, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine positions. And yeah, there were eight caseworkers, starting with four, four, eight, three, ending in four, four, nine, zero. And a paralegal in four, seven, zero, three, seven, zero, zero, three. Yeah. And then page one oh nine, ending in nineteen oh two.
Page four, or page ninety-nine.
Page one oh nine, one oh nine, ending in nineteen oh two, was a senior typist.
Chris, it's all the new positions, basically.
Is the typist reimbursed?
Yes.
Sixty-two, I'm sorry. I'm like sixty-two, oh.
No, that's seventy-five percent because it's part of our legal team. It's administrative. They'll touch one, two programs.
Is that paralegal reimbursed at sixty-two or seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
And all the caseworkers are at seventy-nine?
Sixty-two percent.
Was there a motion to leave the, you guys have additional additions?
We haven't even let, well, a lot of you. He made a motion to amend to take out that section of all those, so you just vote against it, you want to.
Okay.
Are these sixty-two percent?
Is it hot in here? I'm just in a hot seat.
A little bit above.
Full boat?
I I would make a motion to amend, well, wait a minute, he made a motion to amend, we got to vote on that. Bring forward a different question.
Yes, sir. If your intent is to handle these department by department. Probably the cleaner, easier way would be for Legislative Twist to withdraw his original motion, which was all along, so. And then re-make new motions. Department, department.
I think that's what he ended up doing. He said he wrote it down. He amended that motion and break it down.
Break, no, we didn't vote on that. I don't recall any voting to.
We never voted on that.
Okay, so you need to.
I, I'm legislative. No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I just think it's easier if there's a motion made per department. By the way, you know you're talking about it.
So we rescind it first.
Okay, so does he need to rescind everything? Okay, that would be easier. Rescind everything, done. And then we'll go department by department. All right, so I'll rescind it. Got it. I'm going to send that one. Upon the second?
Yes.
I'm a favorite.
All right.
And I need books. So everything is going to rescind it. Okay, so we all know what we're talking about weeks now. And we can go department by department. So. Legislative twist. Make a motion. For department.
Social services.
Social services.
Do I do social services first?
We've discussed it.
We've discussed it.
We're not going off social services.
Well, I think we have all of the presentation and the people who presented yesterday here today. So if you'd like us to walk you back through all of our justification, our data. I'm happy to do that so that you make an informed decision. If you're not comfortable with our jurisdictional committee's recommendations, I'm happy to do that. It is a little bit awkward, but we're happy to stand here.
I'm personally out of what I presented. If the rest of the clients and personnel from any feels so, that's something I'm.
So Legislative Twist, you must know something you don't about keeping kids safe.
No, you don't. You can't just word it that way.
You can't word it that way. And I won't have it in my meeting. Because a lot of times we hear this repeatedly and I don't know, stop, timeout right now. I don't want, I don't want it labeled that way.
Okay.
Because we've been down this road before.
Okay.
And I and I know that there were several caseworkers instituted at several different periods of time. I think, yeah, it was before your time.
Okay.
But we've had several caseworkers and we were, and there's been several times we've been told that they're going to be paid for and they haven't been. That that has come back to us. So this is where, this is where our dilemma seems to be today. Where we're continually hiring more caseworkers. Continually hiring more caseworkers. And then we find out later that we're not getting the percentage of its background. We find out there's caps on stuff. So you can't help but understand why we're questioning and we're trying to figure this out.
Okay.
Okay, I still believe, I still believe.
Are you talking on?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking in general, on a general basis.
I just want to point out that obviously, I think every person in this room thinks that families should be safe. And for you to say that to me, honestly, I'm extremely offended. You should not say that to a legislator in a meeting like this. On top, on top of that, I just want to say this is purely a budget thing for me and looking for the future of this county. If we were to say yes to every increase that every department had said. The taxes would increase instrumentally, like, like crazy. It would be absolutely crazy if we allowed that. So me, I'm looking at it as a budget issue. And we cannot allow, I don't want to word it that way. I have to look at everything to stay within the tax cap and I realize that this year we will. But if we allow every single year to keep building our departments, we won't be the next year, not even close. Next year after that, we won't be even close to that. So we have to do our best to allow our taxpayers to not have a humongous tax burden.
My apologies to you, Legislative Twist. I I do, as the commissioner, take my responsibility of keeping children and families safe in the community. And sometimes my mission gets in the way, so please know it's it's mission driven.
I'm not sure if the procedure is allowed, because I don't make this, but I'd like to call the question on the social services portion of this budget. And let's vote, please.
Well, what we're, we're going to do with the part.
We're doing it by your part.
Right.
And quite honestly, we should call the question that's non-debatable. We need a second to the motion.
Is there actually a motion on the floor right now?
Legislative twist wants to make his motion with DSS.
So as presented before, I believe it was page ninety-nine, one oh six and one oh eight. And one oh nine, correct? I'm going to make the exact right, go through the line here. I'm going to make the same motion that I made before. That specifically.
Okay, I got a motion on table. To follow through with the entire presenting of Legislative Twist on. The Department of Social Services cuts, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a second? One more time, do I have a second? Okay, that motion fails. All right, so. What did you want to look at? Do you want to look at something different?
We might as well just go through the whole budget.
You have the other departments. You need like the motions. Okay. All right. All right, so.
District Attorney. Page thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a flat minute recess. Do I have a second?
Yep.
I'm a favorite.
All right.
Hi, clear post. Thank you. Okay, go back to. To the.
I'm not in your shield. Close the same cuts as I said before. Page thirteen.
Okay. No, you don't have to. Do I have a second on? A motion on the.
A motion on the DA? Second legislator votes. Well, legislature twist, I think one of those positions.
Yeah.
Is a live question.
You're correct. Yeah. Uh, so that person would move to DFI and take out any current employees. So, line three, three, one, five, zero, five, two, zero, one. That's not part of this. So it may be, uh, first.
Do I have a motion and a second on?
Thirteen oh eight and forty-seven oh four. So. An ADA and a typist.
Correct. Discussion.
If the, uh, one of the reasons these were put in is in regards to the, uh, criminal justice reforms that were coming down that our, our governor said would not have a cost impact on us at all today. And you kind of be further from the truth on this. Uh, I do know in talking with the district attorney, we, we revised the submitted budget, um, down even lower on, on the positions that he originally requested. Um, and let's, I, I think legislator twist is on to the point that, you know, it's a wait and see matter and I understand the DA has said that we don't know. Uh, we do know it's going to take a number of man-hours and person-hours, I should say, to do these jobs. Um, discovery, they have fifteen days to submit the information. So, uh, I, I do, uh, understand that and, uh, we don't know exactly what the end results are going to end up being for this whole discovery. Um, but this is what was submitted by the, uh, DA.
Well, I too agree with, um, legislator twist on this as far as. We need to see what, exactly what, what we're gonna do before we just pass. So, um, is there, Greg, do you want to say anything on this?
Go back to that, please.
Um, the other positions are recommended by Phil or Fastier jurisdictional committee. They're total late positions. One of those is a deputy court position. So really on the DA side, there are seven positions. Uh, this legislature paid ninety thousand dollars for a study two years ago from CGR. They came back and recommended a total of six positions that needed to be added under the DA side. Uh, they recommended four attorneys, a paralegal, um, four attorneys, paralegal, and a typist. Of those six positions, uh, that were added. So far, the legislature has added two ADA positions, leaving us short from what CGR recommended should be adequate and competent under the status quo. That was existing two years ago, that's existing today. Um, so most of these positions are in part to bring us up to where we need to be to bring us aligned with other counties. Because when the study was passed, uh, initiated two years ago, we had caseload seventy-two percent above other counties in upstate New York and led the state, the single highest caseload of any county in the state period yet. Two years ago, I had mentioned that my staff was beginning burned out because of that caseload. We had a study, it came forward, and unfortunately, last year I lost four of my six full-time ADAs because based on that burnout. And they decided she should take a plane elsewhere, some with other county departments. Uh, and then one of them is unfortunate circumstances. It's taken me this last year to kind of rebuild my department, to get people who are competent. Um, I had to go through and get state legislation to be a little higher outside of the county because there were no competent qualified candidates within a Swego County. The staff that I have right now is still overworked. And on top of the work that we have now, the state has passed discovery reform, bail reform, and speedy trial changes. That although we don't know exactly all the fine details, we do know that it's going to result in significantly more work for our office. One of the main requirements for the discovery is that we now have to provide discovery for every single case that's charged by law enforcement. Presently, we only have to provide discovery on felonies if the person is indicted and goes to county court. And generally, they're indicted while they're providing discovery. Uh, but some of those cases work out. If they waive indictment and plea, because it's a negotiated disposition, we don't have to provide discover. Most of the time on misdemeanors, again, we have informal discovery where we give them copies of what we have. Um, maybe twenty times a year, we get actual honest to goodness formal discovery demands on misdemeanors. So between misdemeanors and felonies, we get honest to goodness discovery demands of about a hundred cases, give or take, this year, last year. We have over thirty-three thousand violations, felonies, and misdemeanors that are arrested every year. Approximately seven hundred and sixty felonies last year, about twenty-three hundred misdemeanors, three to four hundred violations. In addition to that, between fifteen and twenty thousand vehicle and traffic tickets, we have never, ever had to provide discovery for vehicle traffic tickets. Under this new law, we have to provide. And when I said we need to talk about discovery, under current law, the statute sets forth certain items that we have to provide. About thirteen, fourteen categories of information. As to remaining information, the defense will get it if we go to a hearing or if we go to a trial. The new law basically says we have to provide everything. Every police report, every note, every statement, every video, every telephone call, every recording that there is, including information from nine-one-one. Again, we never had to get channel one calls, pad reports, uh, electronic. Again, it is greatly expanded, basically anything and everything that touches upon and relates to this case, we have to provide. Um, including that first fifteen days, we now have to identify where our witnesses are going to be. If we go to trial, a trial that may never happen, but likely will happen. We have to bring criminal histories out of those people. Um, and again, we're talking many, few individuals that we're going to have to run that for. We have to provide information regarding experts, uh, testing. Again, it is so incredibly large, we wanted to make sure we let's provide. And turn it over, not just mail it up by day fifteen, but make sure the defendant or the defense attorney has it in their hands or at their office by day fifteen. And if we do not comply with that, the court can give an adverse instructs maybe jury. The court can preclude evidence from a end, which means they actually keep it out, preclude witnesses who are being called or outright dismiss the case. And if we don't comply in that fifteen days, again, it could be a dismissal of the case. Um, and there's very little remedy for us because it's written right in the statute and that's, the court has that authority if we don't comply. If we comply, we have to file a certificate of compliance with the court. And we have to do that before we can announce ready for trial on the map. If we don't comply, we can't send them a fair to go forward. Um, again, we don't know all the exact permutations of this, but we are going from essentially a hundred cases where we provided honest to goodness discovery, to now be responsible for the amount of over three thousand violations, misdemeanors, and felonies. One hundred, three thousand. And now at fifteen thousand traffic tickets that we now have to comply with. It is unmanageable. Frankly, even with the positions that are added, I talked to the jurisdictional committee the other day, I'm not sure we can comply. I don't think any, any office can comply with these burdens that we place on us. The state attorney general, Letitia James, came out the other day, again, her party, you know, the Democratic governor, Democratic legislature passes. Letitia James said, this is unworkable. This is incredible. We cannot comply as prosecutors. We are going to do our best to comply. And frankly, I do more than the decisions that are even being recommended in the budget as is. I've said I'll be willing to start with this, take the wait and see approach, but this is kind of a minimum that I need even to come close to being able to comply with new obligations. Because if we don't, cases are going to get dismissed. Defendants who are out there committing real crimes are going to be hurting people. And again, when I talk about the discovery aspect, that's one aspect that we say in our office next year. Next year, Swego County is going to be starting a centralized arraignment court. That's basically compelled by the Horal hearing decision. Basically comply with the Court of Appeals decision saying we have to have counsel at arraignment or else we're violating their six amendment rights. And again, we as a county to be subject to lawsuit if we don't comply with that. Well, then we're going to have that cer, centralized arraignment court or the cap cart, cap court as we're calling it. Again, that means we're going to have court from six to ten-thirty every evening in the public safety building, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And there's going to be an arraignment part, eight o'clock every morning, seven days a week, three sixty-five. So, I now have to staff a court that I've never had to staff before for at least five hours per night, at least an hour every morning, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Try to be able to do that with my existing staff. And again, even with the people that are recommended in the budget, it's going to be a stretch. On election night, a couple nights ago, I wasn't out watching, waiting for returns. I wasn't sitting in a hotel room drinking, watching returns. I was sitting with my staff from four to nine o'clock election night, getting ready for the new changes that are taking place from the beginning of the year. Because as much training as we've been doing, we've been handling out the fine points. I tell you, at the end of that meeting, I was counseling one of the newer idiots who was literally crying, saying, how are we going to comply with this? It is so overwhelming. To cut positions further, again, is going to put the public at risk. It is going to create a public safety issue. Again, I don't know how we're going to comply with it right now, but to cut the typist position is going to help us with the intake. Again, the sheriffs asked for a couple positions so we could collect all this evidence from police, police agencies. So we could collect information from nine-one-one. And again, to be clear, it's not that we're just collecting it from law enforcement and then passing it out and we receive it. We're not simply a conduit. We have to review every piece of evidence. We have to now stipulate and say who are going to call as witnesses, what criminal histories. We as a means office have to designate what items are property that might try to introduce and where those items were moved here, uh, which expert witnesses we can follow. Um, and again, if there's confidential information, uh, such as confidential informants, undercover officers, we are going to have to make motions to the court for protective orders to keep those people's identities and information sacred so they're not put at risk. Again, if we're not able to do that, quite frankly, we might as well get rid of the task force. Because we're not going to have anybody coming forward and cooperate, give us information because their identity is going to be out there in the public.
Okay, Greg. You got the gist.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's it.
Yes, again, as much as I hate to say it, I, I really think we've got to step back and, and look and see. And, and it's not like it wouldn't be unattainable for you to come back and say, look, here's what I have, and this is what I need. But I just can't, I just, I, I can't. I hate to say it, I, I, I want to see what happens. We do, we, there's too many, uh, unknowns out there at this point.
And when that unknown, when that what happened six months from now, is it really just being set free because we couldn't comply? Somebody who seriously.
But you yourself has already told, you yourself has already told me that we're not going to get the information back from the state fast enough to even comply with what. So it's, it goes much deeper than just your people.
Oh, it is.
Exactly.
And as I told you.
Let's, let's work on that also, and then we can address this. Because that, that alone, from your words yourself, that there's going to be problems on the other side that need to be addressed. So it's not just your department, it's going to be elsewhere, that's going to have to handle some of this stuff. That you, that, that you, you, you just said yourself that there's other district attorneys out there that are saying it's unattainable. It can't happen, correct? Did you just tell me that? Thank you. So, if they're saying it, and you're saying it, and I know Fitzpatrick is saying it, and everybody else is saying it, eventually somebody's going to listen. Somebody has got to listen to this, okay? The, the, and that's why I said, that's why I say the variables are still unknown. And I'm not saying that, that, that I totally disagree with what you're saying here. But I want to see what happens. We really need to see what happens.
Yes, sir. I just want to point out, you said multiple times, the public's going to be at risk, but you said the public already is at risk. See what I'm saying? You already said, you know, even with these people that I'm going, going to get after this budget, even if they kept it the same as a tentative one. We're still on the initiative.
Well, there's.
So to me, there is not a big change from, from that. I mean, it's.
Pat, there, there are degrees of risk. And it is looking at harms. And you're trying to comply and we're going to have to triage cases. We do that now. And we're going to make priorities framed against it, serious violent offenses. And we're going to prioritize those. And I'm going to tell you, again, there are going to be certain things we're not going to comply with, vehicle and traffic matters. They're going to be nearly impossible for us to prosecute because one of the conditions put in this, in the law, is we cannot condition any offer of any way of discovery. There can't be a quick pro call of what, I'm going to give your client a deal of sanctuary as long as he waives this and we don't have to do it. We can't ask that question. Yet they're pleading to a crime, a felony, or a misdemeanor. They cannot waive this discovery. So the question becomes, we're going to try to capture as many cases as we can, prosecute vigilantly as many cases as we can. But that's, that's the main staff that we have. But every staff person that you cut necessarily means more criminals lying free. And I'm going to tell you, I looked at the state comptroller's report. The towns in this county took in about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year collectively. Not the two cities, but the towns from traffic courts, from local magistrates and town courts. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars came into the coffers of your towns because of the prosecutions that my office does. I can tell you, traffic ticket is at the bottom of priority list. If I don't have the people to prosecute the felonies, the traffic tickets are not going to prosecute. You're going to see that impact directly in your town budgets. And I'm not picking that cherry, but I know the number off the top of my head, just because we talked about it. Town of Hannibal took in sixty-two thousand dollars last year in the town court. If I can't visually prosecute cases that, not because I want to or don't want to, but if I can't, the town of Hannibal is going to see a loss of money. Town of New Haven's going to see a loss of money. That's, that's part of the impact it's going to have. And my fear, again, the legislature has changed the bail laws dramatically. One of the things that hasn't been addressed in this is frankly, as defendants are being cut loose, being released out of their own recognizance, we're going to have fewer people showing up to court. We're going to have more bench warrants. We're going to have more hearings regarding that, more hearings regarding people abstaining. And quite frankly, what stops some of these defendants from committing more crimes is they're sitting in the jail. When they're not sitting in the jail, they're going to be committing more crimes.
And that's not, this legislature is putting them back on the streets.
But, but we have the responsibility as a community, you're right. We, as a county, didn't set that policy, the state did. But we as a county have to marshal our resources, figure out what we need to do. It's a bad decision with bad outcomes. What do we need to do to limit those bad outcomes for our community? And that means putting resources in place and it's, it's an unfounded mandate. That's exactly what it is. But if we don't marshal the resources, they're going to be adverse consequences to members of our community.
Thank you. I'm taking a note. With that discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
I oppose.
Three opposed, two in favor.
Three.
Three?
Three, three.
Three, three.
Uh, page thirty, we're in one, four, one, 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 eight, six, zero, one. I'm going to, uh, or ask to cut that line. Mr. Karen?
Hold on. Wait a second. Wait a second. All in favor? No, wait a minute, no, no, no. Discussion. Go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, Michael couldn't be here and he had another issue that he had to attend to. Not to get too far into the weeds, uh, this is an extension of the rehabilitation and the expansion of the Swego DMV. When we had a. When we had originally sat down in twenty eighteen looking forward, this position was originally gonna be a motor vehicle clerk. Over the last two years, due to retirements and resignations, most recently, we lost a senior motor vehicle clerk in that particular area. We view that this, this individual, as a supervisor, would be able to provide not only the frontline staff requirements that we need in that office, but also the supervisory capacity that we seem to be running short on. We anticipate one retirement as of the first of the year of a senior motor vehicle clerk, as well as a possible second one in twenty-twenty. So this is also along the lines of succession plan, just to make sure that that office runs as smoothly as possible. Guy, you know, would ask of, you guys have strongly reconsidered it, not maybe compromise and allow us to put that motor vehicle clerk back in the budget, but at least give us that frontline staff component. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the motor vehicle supervisor that is listed at fifty thousand, that's the individual that oversees all your motor vehicles, correct?
Correct.
So what's a deputy county clerk in charge of motor vehicles under that?
They would be underneath that individual and would oversee the operations of the senior motor vehicle staff with training. So for instance, right now, in our Oswego DMV, we lost our senior motor vehicle clerk. A frontline staff member ascended to that position. That now leaves us currently with four individuals working that office. I believe the longest tenure person is around two years. So the other three don't really function at the highest level. So that senior motor vehicle clerk, who is in charge of daily reconciliations of funds, is required to work the frontline more often than they typically would. This person could pick up the duties of reconciling bank accounts, as well as training that other individuals.
So the motor vehicle supervisor, who's been in place for years, is gonna be over a deputy county clerk in the motor vehicle?
No, the deputy isn't the same level as my position. So they would be over the motor vehicle supervisor. The difference between motor vehicle supervisor versus a deputy is it's more of an empty position. It's more of a flexible administrative role to oversee it all. Whereas the motor vehicle supervisor now handles a lot of the technical aspect of state DMV, but isn't as administratively focused.
I guess my only concern and point on this whole, on this particular position, with knowledge of the department and everything, for years, motor vehicle supervisor was just for what was needed up there. And now we're just adding another deputy to it. And I know it took years to get two deputy county clerks in the county clerk's office. And at the time, the second deputy county clerk was to address some of the matters with the administrative duties for the motor vehicles. I just don't know if maybe what the title is inappropriate for what I perceive as needed for that office, or if maybe, like you said, maybe it should've been more along the lines of just a motor vehicle clerk for that office.
Any other questions? Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Both.
Carries.
Uh, it's gonna be page forty-nine. I listed pay increase substantial in this for twelve hours a day, switched to thirty-five to forty hours. I wanna request that it changes to eighty-seven, three-eight-seven.
It's just an exhortative. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Discussion.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Legislature twist, is your motion to change to eighty-seven, three-eight-seven and still change, also change it from thirty-five to forty hours? Or keep it at thirty-five?
Well, I was, I'm just under the impression that it's a humongous increase, just to go thirty-five to forty hours plus the annual increase. It just seems.
I just, yeah, but I didn't.
I, I believe that is a substantial compensation for us to switch to forty hours.
But it's in a salary position. Salary position is you're there for as long as you need to be.
Right.
But there are, there are, there are positions within the management compensation plan that are designated forty-hour work weeks, and that's the minimum they have to put in, like fire calls, maybe. There are other positions that are designated thirty-five hours, that's the minimum they have to put in. And that was decided long ago based on the.
So that would be a change in that.
Right, right. The, the, the discussion was, the original request was, was to go to ninety-three and increase the minimum hours from thirty-five to forty. That, that's, you can increase it to forty hours and assign, assign a higher rate, or any rate that you want. I just wanted to know whether your motion included changing the minimum for that position to thirty, from thirty-five to forty, or not.
I'd say.
Because that was the original justification.
Yeah, I'd say that's it.
Okay. Second quiet clarification is eighty-seven, three-eight-seven does not match any of the steps in the management plan. The two closest steps are step twenty-five and twenty-six. Twenty-six would go higher by six hundred and one bucks. Step twenty-five would go lower by six hundred and ninety-nine bucks. So what I'm suggesting is it should be assigned to step, so that the future career is.
Step of the high six.
Step twenty, twenty-six, is that the one? Yes, that would be. Eighty-seven, uh, ninety-eight, yeah. So this motion could be to set it at step twenty-six, at eighty-seven, ninety-eight. And whichever you want, to thirty-five or forty hours. Like the justification for the forty hours is that it's a twenty-four-seven operation, the free shifts. Forty hours is allowed to, to observe more than one shift at a time. We'll do it to forty hours. Okay, so we, we still the motion.
I don't even know what the place.
Three. Step twenty-six.
Step twenty-six. Going to change my adjustment to the budget to line forty-nine, or page forty-nine, line three-zero-two-zero-nine-eight, three-zero-one, to go to, to comply with tier twenty-six.
Okay. Salary rate fifty, step twenty-six. How many hours?
Forty hours.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a first? Sign of a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you.
Okay, so after compromise was worked out a little bit, I'm going, I would like to propose that remove four case workers instead of all of them, leaving the two senior case workers, the DSS attorney, the TFS attorney.
I'd rather have two case workers, which is actually a lower amount of money. So if you get six case workers, you start with four case workers and help seniors.
The seniors are.
The seniors are.
Seniors are already included.
Now motion will be four case clerks. Page one-oh-eight, line six-oh-seven, zero-zero, four-four, eight-three, to eight-six.
Okay, discussion on that. May I have a second? All right. May I have a second? I have a second by legislature votes. Thank you. Discussion.
If you do this, you also have to adjust the revenue line, eight-six-zero-seven-zero, four-three-six-oh-nine-oh. It's a move of about a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Because the refund.
He wants to get the reimbursement, hence the six to thirty-one percent.
Sixty-two percent, right? Yeah. One-oh-four-three-eight-six.
Eight-six-oh-seven-oh, four-three-six-oh-nine-zero. Is the revenue line, four-three-six-oh-nine-zero.
How much money did you say?
Hundred and four thousand.
Hundred and four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six.
The fact that the print, it's like on the retirement line, just like it.
But all the lines on Jamie's budget, probably other companies, and our IP ones. You can have supply different ones.
Should work out.
Yeah. Look, take that revenue, that much as well. It's a trickle effect, with all the different revenues, all the different.
Right.
I do wanna say that the board appoints people to the child abuse, child protective advisory council, CPAD, which was established about ten years ago after the death of Derek Maxwell. And they are the ones that came up after analyzing a lot of data with the, with the eight. You know, we didn't just kind of pick eight out of the, out of the air. We looked at all the different caseloads, what we projected with the trending, especially our one-hundred-and-twenty-eight percent increase in two years of foster care with the opioid epidemic. And eight was actually a conservative number that we came up with. So I just wanna put that out there so that folks understand that, you know, there was a lot of thought that remained in the community, and that was the advisory board that you brought up.
Okay. One discussion?
Okay. Well, I just, I'd just like to reiterate that the jurisdictional committees worked really hard on this and, yeah, you guys don't come to those jurisdictional meetings, so I, I'm just surprised that.
It's not about faith, Billy. Okay, it's not about faith. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Both. Two opposed.
Carries. Thank you.
And then I would like to make one more motion. I'm going to ask that all the changes that, when we figure out, come from all the money, that all the changes directly lower our reliance on statistics. So all the high activity, I've made that note.
We still have two more budgets we have to go through.
I know, but the changes that I just made.
We're not letting Gardner slip by.
I was, just for my changes, I mean, the other ones.
Okay, we can revisit that. We can revisit that, okay.
I redact my standard.
Redact.
Resentment, redact. The tracks, whatever.
You, me. And my budget's on page ten. Covers the cost of my staff and the audit staff. And, and as well as the purchasing contracts within the budget. The, unfortunately, we're not spending the bring home revenue, so that kind of cost is about five thousand bucks for the modified.
And next, motion to move. First, motion to move.
Second.
By legislature, well, or second by legislature twice. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carries. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you. Uh, page twenty-four. And I just wanna tell you that it's been quite an interesting year. Somebody has to pay for all these changes, good, bad, or indifferent. And it appears that the money's flowing, going down. And as we all know, from the four-to-two year, it's definitely impacted what occurs in the treasurer's office in a very positive manner. So one thing is, as we say with data, and my situation is kind of the opposite. I'm not gonna plead because negativity, I'm pleading because of positivity. We have people wanting left to give us money. And we have to account for it properly. We have to, we have taken in more money this year than the past several years, and I can, I can talk about that if you guys want. But if you go down through my budget, you'll see with treasurer's fees, with, with various property taxes, everything, people are starting to pay earlier, and it's starting to jump. Our foreclosures, obviously, are jumping, but we're, now we're making people pay sooner, so it's going up. And contracts, we make one percent a month for every contract, the contracts that we're doing now. I had to stop taking a mint house, and we're doing by mail now, because there's so many. And we're about forty percent over last year at this time. The don't even notices, everyone's calling, they wanna do something, they said their property, so it's going into contracts. So we could probably see a lot more impact with contracts. We make a percent there for some, some fees. Yes, I'm the mean guy, I have to make some money, and I have to count for, I have to count for it through my staff. So, very simple. There's two junior accountants in my, in my office, I would like to upgrade them to, it's not senior accountants, just regular accountants. Those numbers, I'll get with Steve right, you know, afterwards, I go with H R just to confirm, but I just ballparked what I could figure out with benefits, it's about seventeen thousand. To do that, bump those two up, they have taken, they will be taking on a lot more extra roles, obviously, with express pay coming on board and payroll. Robin actually was pretty much the center of a lot of the activities. Now I can spread it out more, now that we have more ability to do accounting.
Okay. About it. Now, Brian?
And then just an additional account clerk, very simple. We have one account clerk now, that position's not filled, she starts Monday. What I have now is that the senior count clerk, that's supposed to be helping with foreclosure, doing that job along with every one of our staff members, goes up front to help out. So I, I'm asking for one additional count clerk, you know, we have two account clerks to handle the incoming, people coming in from the outside. And it's all internal, and I wanna increase my fees line, which is the three-hundred line, by twenty-five thousand. It's already been jumped to three-twenty-five, but it's pretty safe at three-fifty, to continue that, because the fees are, they're just going up. And then the next line, the one-oh, one-oh line, by thirty-five thousand, because that's already over budget by eight-two thousand. So, and I'll give the official numbers with Steve after, if you just approve, if you will, if you can. Uh, and I'll give the official numbers with Steve after, if you just approve, if, if you will, if you can approve the position, then I can work out with Steve the amounts and stuff like that. Because it's pretty general, I just wanted to see the impact, cost impact. If you flip to the next one real quick. Again, I just want to say, uh, you know, we did sixteen thousand in countertrans, sixteen million countertransactions last year, it's two million over from previous year, and they're still coming. And they're lining up. Um, what, what disturbs me a little bit is when I start seeing a line, these people are the ones that are helping pay. And help pay for the county and, and the services. I hate to say it, I don't think they should be waiting. They should be able to have an access where it's easier online, and we should not penalize them for having them to wait to do a service to help us. So that's the other reason I'd like to get somebody else. We all, like I said, about fifty percent, there'll be a fifty percent increase in, uh, uh, our delinquent properties. So this whole thing is just, it's swelling. And it's a good thing. A bad thing if you don't pay your taxes, but it's good.
We'll go back one slide for a minute, I need to know the other minor revenue, they're thirty-five thousand from forty-two, four. Okay, now my next question for you, Kevin, is, uh, on line four, one, 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 three, zero, hotel motel tax, it went from ten thousand, six hundred to twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
Why, what do we find that? People coming here, like this year, we're asking for more or what?
No, I want more. I settled with Dave.
Oh, okay.
How many pulled that in?
You got fifteen pounds or whatever, what's going on?
The, uh, the last authorization account legislature gave was for the, uh, hotel motel tax, two percent I guess would go to the treasurer's office. What we're being, what's being proposed because the treasurer's office has done some more work to help bring in some delinquent accounts. Uh, what Kevin and Dave Turner worked out is to do a four percent share, uh, to the, for the, to help them cover their administrative costs. And I think we will bring a resolution forward so that's authorized by the legislature. So this is figured out a four percent shift, of four percent, ninety-six percent. Uh, the local law, or not the local law, the state law, uh, on bed tax, uh, restricts bed tax money to be used for only two purposes. Tourism marketing to cover any administrative costs since then. So, uh, it gives us somebody ways to what percentage we say is a game strip, so. But that needs to be set by the legislature proposing an increase in the total.
Yeah, actually, there'll be another caveat into that resolution as well, that the treasurer's office will receive more funding, um, after the books are filed as well, to help. The, the, the situation with this is that we went online on the process, and the amount of time and energy that's been in, I think that even we can even make it even more, more convenient than this hotel. And we're policing that a lot, people don't pay, we found. So, yeah, that's, I know my name, what my name is, but, um, so we're, that's why that might want up here. So, yeah, anything else, I mean, it's, like you said, the major increases are because of the fees. Um, you'll see co, um, consulting, just want to point that out, that's the oddball. Our title service company, we pay out of our consulting money. So because they do all these title searches, we need to bump that up to pay in front of it, that's all. It's not, I'm not bringing consultants to, to do anything.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin? All in favor?
Motion to approve it.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve it? Okay. Yeah, I have a motion by legislator Walber, second by legislator Blackwood.
With the changes.
With the changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you. Truly.
So my, I have four budgets. Um, pages, uh, thirty-six, one thirty-two, one fifty-seven, and one fifty-nine. Um, to give you a short highlight of this, um, positive, we are saving one point five million dollars in help, but help budget in twenty-twenty. Um, due to the drug rebate, um, because hopefully as of next week, we will pass the joint, um, process that we want with the, on the county and city of Syracuse for, uh, for all people to go to Pro Act. Who are, is our CPA vendor, um, prescription, or pharmacy benefit manager. And it just increases our number, and just they're saving to adhere and get better rebates. Um, and also saving over ten thousand dollars, dollars meaning to use discussion planning, and higher rates in our budget. Um, a few of our vendors have, uh, have decided to keep our costs the same for the twenty-twenty year. Um, just great, and then increase their costs and, um, their contract fees, the minor increases due to consulting fees. Those were contractual increases that, you know, they were already agreed to when we signed the contract, so we had to add those in. The one change that we do want to bring up and ask for, um, on page one thirty-two, under unemployment insurance.
Let me skip there.
Okay. I initially, uh, committed an amount of seventy thousand dollars and then this draft is sixty-five thousand dollars currently. As of now, we are at the seventy thousand dollar mark, we are, and we still have to owe fourth quarter. So we're going to be over, so we'll be coming to new budget month, most likely. Um, it fluctuates, last year, you know, we look at the trends, last year we were fifty thousand dollars on unemployment insurance. This year, we're right now at seventy thousand dollars. So it's hard to, uh, project that. Um, we are anticipating roughly about twelve thousand dollars in refunds coming our way due to a couple particular cases that, um, we won. Um, the changes we paid for the actual cost is, um, we do have a lot of turnover, so if an employee needs our employment, goes to work for somebody else and needs them, we are stuck with the unemployment cost. And it all is determined based on how much they are paid and their length of service.
Right.
So.
So do I, do I need a motion? I'm not going to need a motion. That's a change, you'd need a motion. Yeah. I need, I need a motion. What should I do?
Seventy, I want to step back up to seventy, what I submitted, in hopes that we're not in this.
You got that motion?
Yeah.
Motion from legislator twice to take the, the unemployment insurance from sixty-five to seventy thousand.
Yes.
Like that.
Second for discussion, if you ask my questions.
We just, you just, yeah, but last year we were at fifty thousand, you said it fluctuates every year, I mean.
It, it does, but you got, it.
And you got a twelve thousand dollar refund coming, you said, as well.
Yeah, but we still have to owe fourth quarter. Well, third quarter, our payment was thirty-six thousand dollars for third quarter, so. We're over seven year now.
Good. Okay, so I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm glad I carries, bring that back up to seventy. Carries.
Anything else, or could you like to point out? Oh, Dan.
You got the legislative salary without already covered in the, uh, draft that must make, that we've, uh, that had been eliminated.
No, but we're still on A J R, we have two, we have two more sections to go through with her.
Right.
We're still.
I thought you were done.
No, no.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
One fifty-seven. Yep. Zero there.
One fifty-seven?
One fifty-nine, you're at zero.
Okay. So, now, make a motion to, except up in, um, all four, uh, sections of, uh, A J R.
Human Resources Department, I have a first.
I have a second, by legislator twice. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to, with a P six, uh, all the, uh, things that had, like, any, uh, paying people, if I can eliminate it and restore it to the two thousand and nineteen.
Six.
I got my motion.
Okay, so you're putting that as a formal, formal motion?
Yeah.
To remove that. Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails. No, I know that.
Do we, do we need, do we know where we are with this budget before we move along? Do we need to, do we need to recess to compile some numbers before we make a final vote, so we know what we're pushing for out of here?
Well, everything was, uh, the twist made is project neutral, everything that the treasurer made is project neutral. No, no.
Twist made.
So we didn't.
Sixteen, three thousand.
Okay, so I'd like to take a ten minute recess.
I think he's talking longer than that. What do you think, buddy?
Okay, let's take.
Motion for a recess, we will be made at the call of the chairman.
I have a first, second, all in favor? Aye. I make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we, um, with all the changes that were presented here today, we moved a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Development Efficiency Fund. Basically for the five percent that we need matching, that we have to put forward for the late, um, short flooding, um, grant money that was just awarded to the county, we already stopped working at five percent. So we'll put that in that fund, um, to help cover those costs.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, back in the original motion, I guess I've already made one to bring the budget as the tentative budget.
As the tentative budget. Okay.
As a, as a, as a.
As a, I have a first and a second by legislator Holtz. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
My second, legislator Blackwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?